Why don't we begin with a pledge of allegiance? I like to mix it up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now if you'd call me on it. Thank you.
Counselor Kazer.
President.
Counselor Anderson.
Also.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor McCoyd.
Ms. Anderson.
Counselor Osik.
Here.
Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Cook.
Here.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Bennett.
Here. Counselor Nanki, you want to give us additions and deletions?
I would move a microphone.
Okay, start off.
We essentially have additional written testimony which...
That's it? Okay, thank you.
Is it really an addition that we need to vote on, per se?
You want to vote on it?
No.
No, okay. Okay, just to let you know, my target is 8:00, if not sooner, and I may cut it off at 8:00. I think two hours for a work session is oodles. That's a technical term for just about enough. Okay? We will have our presentation from staff, our discussion, and then we'll have public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes, and we'll kind of keep that moving. If people hear somebody else say the same thing they plan on saying, we do accept dittos. Okay. Who's going to...Peter, you're going to start us off? You're going to introduce the introduction?
I will. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. It's my pleasure tonight to be here to really show the council the results of the work that started several months ago when the council adopted a motion to develop a congestion management committee, subcommittee, to take a look at the possibilities for improving traffic congestion on the existing bridges and the movement to and from West Salem. The committee was comprised of the mayor, counselors Kazer and Hoy, and counselor Lewis. There were a number of 7:00 AM meetings, so I congratulate you for attending. We had good participation from the public. There was good outreach, not just the public attending the meeting, but people sending in their suggestions for what they thought could be done out in that area. All ideas were reviewed, vetted, and then analyzed. If they merited, additional reviews. So we were delighted at the amount of response that we had. I also want to thank...now I can think of his Pam's husband, Terry Cole, who happens to be Pamela Cole's husband. So you see Pamela here doing presentations on occasion. Terry represented ODOT since it is an ODOT facility, and he attended every 7:00 AM meeting and really appreciated his help here. So without further ado, we're going to allow...our consultants did the bulk of the work, did all of the analysis. We were delighted to have them on the team. They prepared their presentation, and so without further ado, Scott, are you going to do the presentation?
Julie's going to start.
Julie's going to start? So Julie Fisher from JLA was our...from Cojito, sorry. That's...oops.
Do you have a script?
Yeah, I have no script. I'm going completely ad hoc today. From Cojito, my apologies to Julie. Shouted out her competition. So from Cojito did a...ablely facilitated the council. So nobody thought it could be done, but she was able to do it. So she'll start, and then Scott Manzner was our traffic engineering expert, and Scott is a principal with DKS Associates here in Salem. So without further ado.
We have a PowerPoint.
You'll need to get that right toward you.
There you go. Thank you so much for inviting us to council today. I want to point out that I'm going to start out, do a brief overview of process, have Scott come up, talk a lot about the technical analysis. We'll finish up, and there'll be plenty of time for discussion and questions. I'm just getting this figured out. So the problem, you are well aware, significant traffic congestion and delays in downtown and West Salem. And the goal of the task force is recommendations to relieve congestion and advise the city on policies and actions. And the outcome, short-term recommendations, and there are significant long-term challenges. And just a little bit, one thing I want to point out is the project area, you can see it's downtown, it's West Salem, and it's, you know, all the big roads that are coming into the area. We really wanted to understand at a very basic level how the bridges function in relation to everything that is coming into them. So we had six meetings between February and September, and we really tried to make them focused, thorough, neutral, and as Peter said, the mayor and three city counselors. The general public, we had...we did both a hard copy and an online questionnaire, and we had 1,300 people respond. And many of those answers were sophisticated, detailed, and we took all that information and looked at it closely in relation to all the past studies. And that's kind of formed the basis for the technical analysis. The meetings were open to the public. As Peter mentioned, we had people come and listen, and agency staff also attend the COG. Mike, thank you much for being at several of those really early morning meetings. We drank a lot of coffee, ate a lot of sugar. And I'm going to have Scott step through both existing conditions and the analysis.
Again, I'm Scott Manzner with DKS Associates. And I want to just actually, I was going to step back to Julie's last slide, but there's kind of four steps that we wanted to point out was as we went through this process, you know, one of the goals was to look at ideas, and we didn't want to just look at ideas that had been looked in the past. We wanted to just have everything out on the table and look at all the different solutions to relieve congestion, which was the goal. So we collected ideas from the public. As Julie mentioned, we got a lot of surveys. We evaluate...there's been a lot of studies from the past. In fact, the council government had done a bridgehead study, so we evaluated that. We wanted to make sure we'd seen what was looked in the past, what improvements had been done. And then DKS was brought on board and Cojito for two reasons. One was to facilitate the task force, but also to provide technical support to evaluate the solutions and look at the different alternatives, and ultimately make recommendations for potential solutions. So you have this...you should have a handout right in front of you. I know some of this text is small, but we wanted to really kind of stay consistent with what we had provided to the public and just really point out some of the key pieces of our findings. And this slide, really the point of this is kind of what is the problem today? You can see pictures in the morning. There's significant congestion on Glen Creek, in the vicinity on Wallace Road. We have some figures kind of showing some of the analysis is done. But you can see as the volume has increased today, you have about 9,000 vehicles per hour on our most recent count in the peak hour, in the morning and afternoon. And as you look at in the evening, in the future, you're going to start seeing a small growth, about 1% per year is the growth based on future land use that's estimated within the city's urban growth boundary as well as other regional traffic. You're going to see a growth of about...over the next 20 years, it's estimated about 20%. So more traffic volume is expected in the coming years. And again, about 1% per year is what the growth is estimated at. And that's based on the Portland State PSU land use assumptions for the city and surrounding areas. So I'm going to move on to other slides, but as you're...if you're going through your handout, the next slide is kind of the morning and evening congestion. So first, we're going to focus on the morning congestion. And so the morning commute hours, as Julie went through that study area, we analyzed a lot of different facilities. And one of the things about a transportation system, especially when you're looking at significant congestion, you have to look at all the different intersections and roadway segments and figure out what is the real problem. And just be reminded that we have a short amount of time, but we really had six task force meetings where we went through hours of technical findings, and we're trying to summarize a lot of those results in these slides. But what I wanted to point out, as you can see the cursor, as we looked at Front Street in the morning, so traffic that's coming from West Salem, that's getting off on the Front Street ramp, that is currently at capacity. So the traffic volume that is there today, you can serve that, but as traffic volumes increase, you're going to get more congestion from that Front Street ramp. As you look at the bridge, the capacity of the existing bridge, it is today, based on today's volumes, is a little bit over capacity, about 1% over capacity for what the facility can deliver in its current design and existence. Wallace Road is also, as you looked at Edgewater and Wallace Road, those are both at...Wallace Road is at capacity. That Wallace-Edgewater approach is over capacity based on the existing volumes. Edgewater has a li...I'm not sure what switched there.
Turn it off.
So Edgewater has a little bit of additional capacity and Highway...is that okay? I don't know what switched. So the Highway 22 approach has significant capacity. So if all your growth was coming from Highway 22, there's a lot of additional capacity for that approach. And the next slide, I want to kind of explain, you know, what this means is...
[laughter]
No, we're just going to...
All right. So as we looked at the...what we found is there was a lot of ideas, can we just go and fix one spot in the system and have that be the answer? And really, as we looked at our analysis, we found, you know, if you go and widen the bridge and add capacity to the bridge, that doesn't necessarily mean we have additional facilities to actually deliver that traffic. And that's why we ended up coming up, a lot of the recommendations we had were actually solutions packages. It wasn't just one location. It was actually a series of improvements that were required to deliver that future traffic volume, existing and future. So this is just a schematic to try and help you understand kind of what we were dealing with. If you think about the system as a series of pipes, you know, that Center Street Bridge is that larger pipe, and then you have volumes coming from Wallace and Edgewater to the bridge as well as Highway 22. And then when you're leaving the bridge, you also have kind of exit pipes, Front Street heading northbound, Front Street heading southbound, Center Street. So if you think about, if we go and we build and we widen and we improve capacity on the bridge itself, but we don't do anything to build capacity on either side of the bridge, you really aren't able to deliver that traffic. And that's kind of one of those findings that we had as we went through this process of trying to determine what are those future solutions to help improve capacity and relieve congestion. This is a figure showing the current operations and queues in the morning commute. So as you look at Wallace Road, and this is average queues, you know, there's days...this is kind of an average commute. There's days where it's going to be significantly worse, there's days where it's better. We tried to show an average of what those are, and you can see in the morning, you can see congestion that occurs on Highway 22 because of the bottlenecks for the northbound Front Street, for the bridge, as well as Wallace Road and the bottlenecks you have on Wallace Road at Edgewater. And you can see these are those existing queues. And as you see the traffic volume that's going to increase, those queues will only get worse as time goes on. So now we'll talk a little bit about the evening. So as you're...we were just looking at the morning commute, now we're going to look at the evening commute. So looking at the Marion Street Bridge, today, at the Marion-Center Street intersection...I'm sorry, the Commercial-Marion intersection, that intersection's actually about 15% over capacity with looking at existing volumes. And that's why if you go out there in the evening, you'll see that southbound movement on Commercial that's backed up sometimes quarter mile to a half mile. Even Front Street is starting to add additional congestion and queuing due to that overcapacity. The bridge itself is at about 7% overcapacity as you look at the desired demand of volumes. And Wallace Road, if you look at the bottleneck at Taggart, is right at capacity. So as we looked at kind of, again, those pipes, as you look at the Marion Street Bridge...as you look at the Marion Street Bridge as kind of the main pipe, coming out, you have Wallace and Edgewater is that kind of exiting volume as well as Highway 22. You have Commercial Street, Marion Street, and Front Street serving the bridge. And so as we looked at how to relieve congestion, we really came up with solutions packages to address those capacity needs. And then the evening congestion, as you see some of the queuing and congestion, you have Marion Street that was observed to back up on average back to 12th Street in the evening. Commercial Street, we saw it as far back as Jefferson Street, and the yellow is some of the observations we saw in the worst-case scenario. But again, with the red is really showing kind of those average congested periods. And then additional congestion on Ferry and Liberty in the evening peak hour. So some of the things we saw based on the current traffic volumes. I'm going to turn it back over to Julie.
So we've been looking really specifically at the project area, but there's a bigger picture here. And the Salem bridges are these key connectors, not just on a local level, but on a regional level. And if something happens on the bridges and you need to go a different route, you're going a long ways out of your way. If you're looking for a bridge, it's 35 minutes to Newburgh or south. It's 17 minutes to the Independence Bridge, and there's always the Wheatland Ferry. But I think it just speaks to the importance of the bridge, both for Salem and the surrounding area as well. And I just want to make that point, there's a lot of congested streets in Salem. Like, why is this any different than Kubler or Lancaster? But it is, because if those streets are congested, go two streets over, go two streets down. There is no doing that when you're talking about the bridges. So the lack of alternate routes makes this a really important issue to solve. So now Scott's going to look at...oh, actually, I'm going to go to the next slide. Sorry about that. Here we go. So task force looked at some short-term actions, and it's important to understand that these actions are...they've got limited impact on travel time. They're not a long-term solution. They focus on signage, signal timing, improvements to Wallace Street, and reducing the number of vehicles that are going over the bridge. In addition to these short-term actions, I'm going to have Scott talk a little bit about what we found when we looked for long-term solutions. And that's really where the majority of our technical work landed.
And just to add on this slide, you know, a lot of the solutions we talked about were ...there were some what is called ITS, intelligent transportation systems. You know, as you start seeing wrecks and when you have, example, a couple weeks ago when a truck turned over and was blocking the lanes, you know, some of the ITS really help you manage the congestion, and so it provides you with a smarter system. But as far as we looked at kind of those long-term solutions, as you look at the traffic growth, none of these, you know, solutions were kind of a long-term fix for that, for the study area congestion. So the kind of the final slide we're going to go through from your packet is the longer-term options, as I talked about the solutions packages. So the first one we're going to look at is the Center Street. So we had come up with three Center Street packages that looked at a series of improvements to improve congestion. And this was the Center Street one that before you...as we went through and evaluated it with the task force, this was kind of the preferred alternative for that, for the Center Street package for long-term capacity. And this solution would widen Wallace Road to provide additional capacity on Wallace Road by adding a third lane, third southbound lane. By...we worked with ODOT. We were able to determine that it was feasible to add a fifth lane on the existing bridge structure and then do some additional widening on front, for the Front Street ramps. As you can see, for the southbound Front Street ramp, widening that ramp for two exit lanes as well as a free right turn lane, widening at the Front Street northbound ramp intersection for a free right lane to improve congestion and add capacity at the East Bridgehead. So this was one of those solutions. You know, bottle...one of the things about is you start improving bottlenecks at the bridgeheads, you add more traffic to the system, and what we found is as you went north and south, there were additional bottlenecks. You just ended kind of chasing the problem in the downtown. The project cost for the Center Street package was in a range of $130 to $137 million. So the Marion Street, we had four solution packages that we went through with the congestion task force, and this was the kind of the preferred alternative for Marion Street. And I'll start...I'll go from east to west here. So southbound on Commercial Street, we were able to identify that three southbound right turn lanes would be feasible with widening on the bridgehead as well as reconfiguring Marion Street to have a fourth travel lane to add capacity at the East Bridgehead. On the bridge structure, we were able to determine that we could add a fifth lane for eastbound...I'm sorry, for northbound to westbound traffic on the bridge structure and the need to widen Wallace Road to three northbound lanes. The project cost on this package was about $55 to $65 million. We looked at a lot of different options with the task force of trying to eliminate the weaving and improve capacity even beyond this, but there was just some impacts to parks and some of the other things that were deemed kind of undesirable as we looked at those solution packages. So just kind of to summarize those long-term solution packages, really there was no consensus from the task force to advance those solution packages, but they are beyond the current revenue. The benefits that we looked at really weren't long-lived. And what I mean by that, the travel times, as you went out 10 years, they'd buy you about 10...you know, for most of the approaches to the bridge structures, it would buy us about 10 years, but within 10 years, we're about back to where we are today. And with that, Julie.
So the conclusions, you know, it was a comprehensive, it was a conclusive analysis. We went through a lot of different options, and it was really tough to find...in fact, we did not find short-term, low-cost options that fundamentally solved the problem. You know, I wish I could say that we did, but we didn't. There just really wasn't consensus at this point on long-term solutions. There...it's an ongoing challenge. And I guess...I guess I'd like to end with a quote. You know, Winston Churchill said, "Plans are of little importance, but planning is essential." So it's not an easy journey, but it's an essential one, and I encourage you to discuss, ask questions, and continue the journey.
Any questions? No. No. We're going to ask questions and discuss this about public comment.
Scott, there's some conversation about the issue of peak time, and no matter what the day, I've gotten into the fact that it will peak and then subside. But my sense is that the issue today is we have more of a plateau issue, and it peaks and plateaus out. I'm curious what...and it's 9,000 trips per hour average today. What is the average, or do you know, the average between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM?
The average...well, I think I've got some slides. I have some backup slides here, so... 24. So let's see. I'll get there. All right. So this...I know, Counselor, if you remember these figures in the task force meetings, this is showing on the Marion Street Bridge, it's showing a 24-hour profile that you can see, and the green lines is the range of capacity. So in Marion Street, again, the peak is the evening peak hour, and that's where you see the traffic volumes as they increase, and this is where we start seeing that capacity issue between, you know, 4:00 to 6:00 PM. And, you know, the other peak...one of the things about the capacity is you look at it, anytime there's an incident, that can create other capacity issues. But that's showing the kind of the daily profile on the Marion Street Bridge, and this is showing the Center Street Bridge in the morning. You can see at 5:00 AM as it ramps up to 7:00 AM, it peaks over that existing capacity, and that's where you're seeing that. And this is the spike in traffic, but one of the things with bottlenecks, it can sometimes take...that doesn't necessarily mean that the capacity is gone at that point. Sometimes it takes a while to kind of eliminate and to let that, the traffic volume that has backed up to clear through the system. Does that answer your question? As you look at the...and this is the day...I'm sorry, this is the average hourly weekday volumes.
Yeah, I'm focusing on 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, so you can draw the conclusion that it looks like it's relatively plateaued out after it hits the peak and then goes down, but we're not talking about a great reduction. And I'm not sure what when you add the two together, I mean, this looks like at about 3,000 an hour during that time period. Can you go back to the other slide?
Yes.
And from 7:00, this is about...so it's about 5,000 to 6,000 average, just by looking at these charts.
Correct. And that's one thing we found in the evening, that peaking lasts a lot longer. There's a little bit more of a spike in the morning, but in the evening, coming over the Marion...
Same time.
Yeah, yes, exactly. Yeah.
Period, times.
Yep, that's exactly. In the AM peak, most commuters spread out how they come and go from work. For in the evening, you see a much more of a concentration of traffic volume.
Scott?
Okay. So I'll try and repeat that. It sounds like maybe I said it backwards. In my head, it sounded right. But in the morning, usually your commuter's hours spread out, and then in the evening, you typically have a more concentration of traffic. But because of that, I think what I'm...what maybe I was saying that's confusing is you have more people leaving at the same time, but that's where you end up getting more congestion. So it actually spreads out your peak hour congestion more in the evening versus those commuter hours, because you have more concentration in the evening. Did I say it? No?
Uh-oh.
Any further questions? Did you want to ask a question? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So looking at the...those last slides, and as I dove through this, I didn't...I was waiting for, you know, travel times initially could be reduced by as much as 50%, and then essentially to preconstruction within 10 years. Is that using the short...and I noticed in the other documents, it was short and medium term, not just short term and then long term, because there was some communication we had today regarding Marion, or not Marion, Marine Drive, and whether or not that's really a short term, because we really don't have the funds to build it right now. So when we say cutting it 50%, is that the short term or the long terms, or how?
Yeah. Yeah, that was the long-term solutions packages that led to that reduction.
And that would, if 10 years, if it takes us 10 years to actually get the funds to build the long-term options, then they're essentially no good from, why would we build them 10 years from now if we're going to be at capacity as soon as we build it, kind of like Kubler was originally?
Yeah, that, if it took you that long, yes, to, to fund and build those.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I couldn't tell from the way it was written if that was the long-term or...
Yes, that was the long-term.
So given the useful life of these, or the, before they reach a population impact, you have 10 years. If it takes three, you really get a seven-year life. That's your lifespan of either of these projects is 10 years if you did them today? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, well, the, the 10 years was based on that 1% growth, so as we, as we looked at kind of the population increase, by 10 years, that's when we got to the point where we were back to about the similar congestion that exists today.
So they have a 10-year life if you could do it today?
Correct.
Okay. And if you do it two years from now, they have an eight-year life?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to understand what that meant. Counselor.
Thanks for your work, you and the others have done, Scott. As I read those two charts, it looks like the peak hours are in the morning on the Center Street Bridge is about one, the total is about 1.5 hours out of the 24.
Correct.
And on the evening, because of the issues we've talked about going the other way, it's about around maybe a little less than two hours out of the 24.
Yeah, I'd say in the evening, it's somewhere between two and three.
So also, and this was, you know, your, the slide says there is traffic congestion or delayed, but I think Julie said that it was significant traffic congestion or delays. So could you give me some sort of definition for what are significant delays?
Yeah. And I think the, the task force asked me the same question. It's a very, it's a very challenging question. I mean, the, it's really, each community has a different threshold, so...
Delay is in the eye of the holder?
That's correct.
Or the be waiter?
Yes.
And what, what are the, the delays right now? I, I was under the impression that it's like between five and 11 minutes during the peak hours?
That's correct. That's the travel times through that study area.
Thank you.
And what will happen over then, the next 10 years to that delay? Does that grow at 1% or how does that, what happens to that delay time? Does that increase or is it just there as a constant?
Yeah, there, I mean, there are standards and one of those things, once you get, as I had those slides that showed where the, the bridge and some of the facilities that were overcapacity today, as that traffic volume increases, it cannot, it cannot make it through that system. So it just stores up and then as the, it just kind of meters out as time goes on.
What's that mean?
There's just, it's going to take those, that, that peak spreading that's happening in the evening now, if it takes two hours or three hours, that's just going to continue to expand exponentially.
To what? I mean, really, whatever. I, I just want to kind of understand, we understand that the useful life of these long-term projects is 10 years. What is the, what, what is happening to the growth during that same period on your 1% per year population growth?
Did you say 30?
In terms of wait time or whatever you call it.
So Mayor, I'm going to pull up a slide here. Were you wanting to know about the evening or morning or either?
I don't care.
Okay. So this, this slide was one showing those travel times. And you can see in the morning, we had the different points, let's just use A to E. Today, it takes you about 11 minutes on average to make that, that, that trip from A to E. If we build the Center Street solutions package, that time today would drop down to six minutes.
Okay.
In the evening, if you do nothing, your travel time increases from 11 minutes up to 15 minutes.
What, what happens then in 2028? Where, where are we as we move through time? How long do, do those numbers change?
Yeah. Yeah, it just, it just continues to get worse and worse.
Well, do you have a time factor that it extends or what do you?
I think you're wondering like where, how does that?
Does 11 minutes go to 22 minutes or does 11 minutes go to 30 minutes?
Yeah. So yeah, it goes from 11 minutes today, if you, today with it, up to 15 minutes if we do nothing.
If we do nothing, we gain four minutes of wait time?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and each of those different...
We gained four minutes of wait time from '28 to 2028.
It's a four-minute gap for how many million dollars?
50.
Okay.
Or 200.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to take us back to the, one of the pages that we kind of breezed over, it seemed like. And I was, I guess I'm a little bit confused because I was at every one of those meetings. And it seemed like we, while we didn't get consensus on the long-term stuff, we did get consensus on page five, which is 15 short-term recommendations.
Yeah.
And I, I think that all four of us agreed that while this wasn't a long-term solution, it was a, it was a short-term impact, which is really the goal of this group. And to set the table for a longer-term discussion, so we could help our, our colleagues understand what the long-term potential solutions would be, but we really wanted to impact it on a short-term basis right now, things that we could do in the, for, and I guess I'm a little bit confused because it seemed like you were suggesting that we had, Julie was suggesting that we didn't reach consensus on those things?
No, I'm sorry. Everything that's on this list was, was, was recommended and had consensus from the congestion task force.
Could you give us, could you characterize a little, maybe a few of these on how much they would, how much they would cut off of the commute time in relation to the dollars? Like we just talked about with the longer-term solutions?
Yeah. So on, on the, the signal timing, we took a look at that and there's, the city's already been updating a lot of the signal timing, so there was really very little capacity that we could add from signal timing. The travel time signs really don't add capacity as you look at those. It really helps more, it really helps more during peak congestion or when you have incidents, so people can select other routes. But again, that was, that's one of the nice things that when you have other routes and as, as we had the slide showing kind of where, you know, if you have congestion or accidents within our study area, there, there are a lot of limited locations to, you know, change your travel patterns to. So I'd say that the travel times really...
I want to ask about this one. I want to ask about this travel time sign, because I, I thought that was, it was more of an information for the, but one of the other things I would assume it would do would be to say your wait time is 11 minutes to get to Commercial Street.
Correct.
Because I think the, sometimes it feels, I know it does for me, feels a lot longer, but it would, it would at least signal me what I'm looking at in terms of actual time as I'm looking at my watch trying to figure out.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And it does also, it also does, I mean, one of the good things about that is it, it provides information to travelers that if you want to change your commute habits too.
Yeah.
It gives them the information if they, they look and say it's going to take me 11 minutes right now, if I, if I wait another 30 minutes, it's going to take me five minutes. And so that, there is informational, but again, from a capacity standpoint, it, it can change the demand, but it's not really going to add capacity.
No, but it, but it could affect, by changing demand, it affects capacity.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure I understand the message.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, Counselor Hoy.
Yep. There was agreement on the commuter trip reduction, so working with employers, the state to look at providing flexible commuting times, employee incentives, improving guide signage, so again, trying to discourage weaving and trying to getting traffic. And there can be a small amount of, of capacity and safety with those types of improvements. Constructing Marine Drive is another circulation to provide an alternative route to Wallace Road in West Salem, and that was agreed upon. Also was agreed upon was looking to reduce left turns in West Salem on Wallace Road to improve through capacity at, during the peak hours at the traffic signals. Wallace, looking at the Wallace Taggart intersection, which is the bottleneck in the evening, and looking to add turn lanes and add capacity at that location. And that was something that had, I want to say, it increased our capacity by about 3%. So there was some, some small amounts of capacity that were, were bought there. Variable speed limit signs, just helping people know what the safe speeds are to travel through the study area. There was also some discussion of, you know, improving parking lots in the general vicinity. There's one specifically named out in Wallace Marine Park, improving those lighting to encourage people to park in that area and walk into the downtown to reduce demand. Emergency response, trying to improve our emergency response times, closing the crosswalk at Front and Court in the downtown. And that would provide, add a little capacity at the, the Front Street and Court Street intersection. And also removing the barrier at Musgrave to allow access to the parks for an alternative route to get to Wallace Marine Park. And that's kind of a, a general summary.
You might want to highlight number 12 for the mayor.
Number 12. I missed that. Sorry. Yeah, it was the downtown parking strategy, so that would look at...
Yeah, don't do that.
Oh, the bus, yeah, I'm sorry. They're, they're kind of, come on, it's 12. So, and then the, the bus circulator within the downtown. Sorry about that.
We've got that built into the transit recommendations too. That will appear in everything you see for, I disappear.
Just quickly, there were a couple of things there, the Marine Drive and the removing the barrier. Are those adding capacity at all? Those are more construction?
We, we did look at some modeling of the, of removing the barrier, and there was, there was a small amount of traffic that, that would use that, but it was, you know, less than 50 vehicles and kind of in our evaluation.
And the Marine Drive?
And Marine Drive was...
Not one of the tight pipes?
Yeah, really, exactly. It does, it does take traffic, kind of local traffic off of Wallace Road, but doesn't really add capacity. It just provides an alternative route to access, you know, land uses in the park in that general area.
It, it sounds like kind of ultimately, the only thing that, that really would, would add capacity is really substantial behavior change by drivers trying to get to and from work.
Yes.
Like...
I would agree.
That's it. Okay. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I want to go back to the issue that the mayor talked about, about in terms of, you know, we've got these spikes now and what happens with the 1% growth that has been anticipated. The way I understood that is the spikes would, would widen, that is, the top of it would widen, but I also then understood to say that the delay you've talked about will still be the same actual minutes for each car that goes. It's just there's a, the, you know, a four or five-minute delay, you talked about that delay instead of occurring for an hour and a half will occur for three hours.
Yeah.
Is that right?
No, that's not.
Okay.
Just to clarify that, you're right, that it's, it is going to spread, that peak is going to spread out. And so that traffic that's trying to go through, that's going to take, right now it's taking 11 minutes, will take 15 minutes. So there will be added delay, and you're right, it's just you can't deliver, there's only so much capacity that can be delivered through those intersections.
Well, right now, isn't it delayed from 11 minutes to 15, you know, four minutes from 11 to 15?
Correct.
So 10 years from now, when there's 10% added, will each individual car trip be delayed from 11 to 15? That's what I'm saying.
Yes.
Okay, so you're not slowing down the time that car, one car going from point A to point B goes, it's just that there'll be a longer time for each, that it'll be a four-minute delay.
The queues and congestion will increase and it will take, you're right, I mean, you're, you're not changing your, the distance they're going, but it's going to take longer to go through the system with the additional traffic.
Okay, I mean, that's not what I heard, I thought you just said. The minute, the delay now is from 11 minutes to 15 minutes. 10 years from now, delay for one car?
Let me go back to that slide.
Will be 11 to 15 minutes. 10 years from now, the delay from one car will be from 11 to 15 minutes.
No, it's, it's the total trip time, not the delay that he's displaying, I think.
Yeah, I think he's doing the math and saying the four minutes.
So Counselor Anderson, for, for today, to go from A to E, if we just use that, it takes 11 minutes.
Yeah.
If we do nothing and you just have 10 years of growth, that delay is going to increase from 11 minutes to 15 minutes.
So by four minutes, if you do nothing?
Correct.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that, that tells me what I want to tell, what I want to know, yeah.
If you do something, it still increases.
What, tell me then, I, I was kind of struck by the stacking now moving back to 12th Street. I can remember talking with Julie Warrenkey about this 10 years ago, and we were talking about stacking, I think, all the way back to Cottage. And now we're to 12th or something like, I mean, it was really an interesting, I kind of, I didn't think I'd ever hear we'd hit 12th. So when we hit 12th, do we start stacking back on 12th then, back around the circle toward Center Street? And how does it, how does it work?
Correct.
What does the lengthening mean in terms of what's happening on other streets?
There's a train coming down 12th Street.
Well, we can't count that, yeah. And that is a, that, we don't have wrecks every day, but we have trains, I don't know how many times a day starting to, because it will stack off of, what will happen is a train will hit, you're already to 12th on Marion.
Right.
The train comes, it will start stacking back into the northeast neighborhood substantially. Is that what you're telling me?
Yes, I mean, it's, those queues, I mean, if it's a 12 today...
So Marion Street stacks to 14th, stacks to 15th, stacks to 60th.
Correct.
Is that what happens?
Yes. And, and we had, in the final report, I actually don't have the slide available, but it, we did have a figure that showed how, over, as that volume increased, how those queues will extend.
I, I think that might be a helpful thing to have included, is for people to understand what these queues do look like as they back into the northeast neighborhood, and then also as they back toward the south-central neighborhood, understanding what that stacking's going to look like heading out of downtown, away from the bridges on those major arterials that become the clogged items. I, I think, because the time is one thing, the impact on the arterials and secondary streets is going to be a secondary issue we're going to hear about.
Right. Yeah, and congestion in the downtown, similar to what you see on Court Street in the evening.
We already got that.
Right.
Yeah.
And things will only get worse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Scott, what is the, for this A to E, what's the travel time at non-peak?
Let's see.
Trying to just get, you know, it's not magically transport from A to E other times of the, but trying to get a sense of that.
All right, I think I'm going to have to pull up the final report, because we did have that, kind of the free-flow travel times. Oh, it's, oh, it's right, we are, okay. There it is, it's, is this one? Is that the travel time? Okay. Let's see, so is it, oh, is it page 41 of the report? Uh-oh.
Let's take a tour.
Is that, oh, okay. Let's see the existing travel times. We're getting warmer? Is that it? Okay. So Counselor Kizer, I think here is showing kind of the average at, at free flow would be four minutes.
Okay, so the, so the delay, when we're talking about 11 minutes, we're really talking about the, the peak hour time, there's a seven-minute difference.
Correct, yes, it's increasing seven minutes.
And then it would increase if we did nothing by another four minutes?
Five minutes, I'm sorry, yeah, you're right, four minutes.
But does that, that doesn't necessarily take into, I don't know if we ran the numbers for average, average travel time if we did nothing in 10 years?
Yeah. If we did, yeah, that was the, that was the 15 minutes.
So we're assuming that the average travel time would remain the same on a non, or non-peak hour?
Correct.
Travel time? Okay, thanks.
Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We talked about funding, Scott, or you talked about funding a little bit. Was it within the purview of the task force to discuss any funding options? No? Okay. At some point, I have some questions for staff as opposed to the consultants, and I just want to make sure...
Now's your chance.
Well, okay, I wanted to make sure we're done with the consultants, but I...
No, you can, you can ask your questions, whoever you want to at this point.
Okay, so as Counselor Hoy indicated, that we came up, the task force came up with 15 short-term solutions that could be done, and they all, there appeared to be consensus on this. And as I look at these, some of these are things that, without going into detail on each one, some of them are things that can be done by the city kind of standing alone, some of them are things that... some of them are things that need to be done by the city in conjunction with ODOT, and then some of them might be things that need to be done by the city in conjunction with maybe our regional partners. I think that's probably a lesser of the three options. So I guess my question, Director Fernandez, is what do you need from the council to get started on this?
Yes, I think the, okay, I, the whole idea here is that these recommendations would come to council, council would vote to approve them, and then, you know, there'd be a recommendation to put them in the CIP or adopt them into the transportation plan, and then depending on what they are, some that are lower cost, like you say, could be funded with current funds, others, you know, might have to go through SCATS for funding, especially those that are on ODOT facilities. So then it's just a search for money like it always is.
Well, if I may, before moving on, there are also policy and potentially ordinance changes. For example, under the parking management recommendation, it's recommending charging for on-street parking.
Yeah, no, I...
There are more considerations than just budgetary, that council direction would be helpful for staff to, you know, guide our next steps, the steps that Mr. Fernandez outlined.
Yeah, thank you.
One avenue I may suggest, too, is that we move this essentially by the council to our policy, our policy goal-setting, and get this built into the system so we can get these things into some sort of comprehensive order and get them done.
Well, you anticipated what my next matter was going to be, that we need to fold this into our TSP, to our existing plans, and so...
Well, let's get it into the strategic plan so we can figure out where, let staff then work on how to plug it into the pieces in.
So what you really would hope to see to get these 15 projects going is some sort of motion from the council saying, "We would like you to begin implementation of these 15 projects in conjunction with the TSP, in conjunction with the capital improvement plan, in conjunction with our strategic plan." Is that a fair thing?
I think so. You may have jumped a couple of steps. What I'm going to suggest to you tonight is maybe we close this session determining what of any of this you would like to forward to the council, and I would really suggest forwarding it through that strategic planning process so we can kind of work it together with all the other transportation elements, if that makes sense. And then we can grab, we can also grab pieces any other time we want, but this gets it into a forum where we can make it part of the broader issue.
I don't have any...
I don't think we know enough yet to absolutely say building Wallace, or building...
Marine Drive.
Marine Drive, or opening Musgrave, or some other, or exactly what we want to do, but we could send all of this forward and really get it into a more coherent session.
Well, and that would be my hope, that we could do that.
We can do that tonight?
Yeah, I'd be happy to do it tonight if that's appropriate.
That's what I'll, that's what I'll have you doing then.
Okay, well, then you give me the high sign, and I'll make that motion.
Okay.
But we're not done yet.
No, we're not. Yes, Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I did have a question for staff regarding number one on the short-term actions recommended by the task force as far as optimizing signal timing. It was my understanding that some of the streets featured in the study were not under our jurisdiction, that they were with ODOT, so question, making sure that we've already done that, or is that in process, just checking on the status of that. And then also, I seem to remember that signalized intersections do carry a cost that's not a cost for the servers and the technology to be able to update the signals. Was it explored in this committee, any kind of alternative replacement that would be more cost-effective for those intersections as far as keeping with traffic flow? Thank you.
Yeah, so, any, all those signals in that area, whether they're in an ODOT facility or city facility, are all managed by the city. They're under contract with ODOT. There are some locations where ODOT still manages those signals. I think in this area, they're all managed by, right, Mission Street, but in this area, they're all managed by the city. So we are constantly looking to improve the signal timing, to address signal timing. We're constantly looking to, looking for the latest and best technology that makes sense to implement in terms of software and timing schemes and those kinds of things. So that is, that is an ongoing thing. It is expensive. You know, there is, there's really, there are ongoing costs, electricity, maintenance, software updates, et cetera. In terms of something else that can be done at this point, there is nothing else that can be done, you know, short of autonomous vehicles knowing their way, so that's nothing, nothing else that we're aware of can be done beyond the signalization, continue to improve the signalization.
Nothing like a roundabout, was that discussed in this group?
No, well, there's no, I mean, so roundabouts are possible. In fact, we've had discussions about doing a roundabout at the exit onto Wallace Road years ago, but it would have to be so large, because what creates capacity for a roundabout is the diameter. So we are looking at volumes that are so large that the diameter would be, you know, huge, that the impacts would be well beyond. That is a solution, but it's, but it's a very expensive solution here, highly impactful.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Lewis?
Scott, if I could ask a couple more questions, and if we could go back to the last slide that was on the view. Okay.
So this slide?
Yeah, I, maybe it's made this confused, or maybe I think that this could be a little misleading. What I'm hearing is that during the non-peak time, you can make the travel from A to E in four minutes.
Yeah.
During the peak time, peak hour, it's going to take you 11 minutes.
Correct.
So except for that one peak hour, you're telling me that that commute is four minutes the rest of the day?
No.
No.
What we're saying, that four minutes is free-flow when there's, when there's very little, little traffic.
And how much...
That would be free-flow speeds.
With nobody in my way.
There's other times where it could be, you know, anywhere from seven minutes or eight minutes.
Okay.
But, but, yeah, it's just, that's more of a, you know, non-congested time, how long it would take from those same points.
And how many hours in the day would you say that that non-peak hour, or non-peak happens? How many hours during the day can you do it in four minutes?
I'd have to, probably half, 12 hours.
Okay.
That's a guess.
Secondly, if you can make it in four minutes, and it's now taking 11, and we're going to go to 15, that's 11 additional minutes for each car going across the bridge.
On average, yes.
11 additional minutes, for the example of West Salem, 11 additional minutes on Wallace Road before you go across the bridge.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you. I know we touched on this in the task force, but I just wanted to bring it back up. In your research and consulting work, I guess, is there any kind of standard for travel times? Like, does Salem have any standards for travel times?
No, ODOT has capacity standards, so it's based on levels of capacity. So 85% or 90% capacity is when they consider the intersection over capacity. The city also has delay per, kind of intersection delay, and it's delay per vehicle. As far as travel times, Salem nor ODOT have, in this region, do not have travel time standards.
The travel time standard, is there any cities in Oregon that have that, that you know?
I'm sure there are, but...
Adopted travel time standard?
No, I mean, the Portland metropolitan area has hours of congestion, so they measure it for how many hours things are operating, you know, intersections, similar to what ODOT and the city have, delay per vehicle, but they measure it for additional hours rather than just the peak hour.
Okay. I think, I think one of the things that the task force struggled with was that we don't have a standard for what is considered an acceptable travel time, peak hour and non-peak hour. Because like, for example, there, your average travel time, four minutes from A to E, you know, speed is 32 miles an hour, you're kind of, you know, assuming a lot there, like that that is a standard, what it should be, but to your point, this is like considering, there's no other roads on the road, there's, the lights are all green, I guess, and you're just going. But that's not real life, though.
Right.
You know, there's other cars there, there's, the lights do turn red, you know, you have to negotiate with people and pedestrians and all that kind of stuff, so. So without that travel time standard, or some type of collective agreement about how long it should take to get somewhere, it becomes very difficult to define what is good and what is bad, because everybody's threshold is going to be different. I was just in Boston, which is very, very different than Salem, but they have a very, very different threshold for what traffic is, just like Portland has a very, very different threshold for traffic, just as Fossil, Oregon, has a very, very different threshold for what is considered traffic. So I think in the future, it could be perhaps an interesting exercise to get serious about what should an acceptable travel time look like from any given point to another. And without that, we just, we're just left with subjective feelings about traffic. And we can say, yes, when there's an accident that blocks things for hours, yeah, that's bad, that makes it very difficult, and it impacts people. But when we say this is a kind of normal commute, and even, you know, my commute, I know I have to leave a little bit earlier because I'm on the road with a lot of other people at the same time. But I think until we get serious about that, we're not going to have any kind of objective standard to measure improvement by. And we can talk as much as we want about long-term solutions, but without that, we're not going to know if we really hit the mark.
I, thank you, Counselor. I thought that would, actually, I thought that was going to be one of our recommendations, was that we were going to have a, some sort of developed standard on these times, because I think one of the things that's kind of misleading, at least from my experience, is how long it's taking, because when I, when I get trapped going over or coming back from West Salem, it feels a lot longer than 11 minutes. Now, maybe I'm wrong, except I'm thinking of that two to three hours I waited for that truck to get moved from under the bridge, but I chose the quick route. I took the 17 minutes to Independence and across, and then the 10 minutes or 20 minutes back up to the city. I guess I really agree with the Counselor that that should be something on this list, and I hope you'll add it to it. I think having some sort of objective statement of what this means.
Yeah.
Because I'm not sure, I just don't have that 11-minute experience. I come from 16th Street to get onto Commercial Street. I can't use Marion Street to come to a city council meeting because it is totally clogged. So I have to go down Court Street in the left lane because they clog the two right lanes coming down Court Street, and it still takes 15 minutes, and I'm closer than A to E. So I'm having trouble with this timing thing. The other for me is what's going to happen to the duration of those peak periods over time? Do they go for two hours or one hour? It feels like, I'm really concerned about this stacking, but I hope we can come up with some standard on these different kinds of elements to work with. Counselor?
Well, if, I could just add, too, is adopting some type, or just looking at a standard is not just a, how do we cross the river, you know, exercise, it would be for other areas of the city that are experiencing, you know, Lancaster and Commercial and...
Don't forget Outso.
Kubler, wherever it might be, it's a model, you know, if we could build a model to interpret what, what should a standard be, or how do we adopt one, or what's criteria for what is acceptable and not acceptable, some of this stuff might be a bit easier to...
Might be a little trickier, because I think as was pointed out, you have alternatives on Kubler, you have alternatives on Commercial, sort of. You sort of have alternatives on Liberty, sort of, but you don't on Marion or Center at those times of day. So it does change it a little bit, but I agree, I think we ought to know when we're hitting not just capacity of 101, 117, or whatever percent, but when do we hit tolerable, or whatever it be, I don't know, whatever we all, I think that's really what it amounts to, is an agreement among us all as a community. If you have to take 20 minutes to get from A to E, or 10 minutes, or seven minutes, that is either too long or not too long. And that's an accepted policy statement. I'd like to see that built into this at some point. Yeah, Counselor?
I am really appreciating the conversation around this, and I had never thought of it that way, Counselor Kizer, so I really appreciate you bringing that to light. I find it interesting from my perspective, because there seems to be a narrative within the city of when you're running late, whether, for whatever reason, it is because of traffic. And I know, based on the work that I do out in the community, it is not unusual for people to put their experiential data over the data that's brought to the group for anecdotes to outweigh evidence. And I understand how powerful that can be from experience, but I think it's really important that we frame this issue appropriately, which we haven't perfected time travel, we haven't perfected teleportation, we're not going to get there instantly. If there's a delay...
It's coming, though, you weren't going to...
Well, I don't know. If we're going to assume that it's going to take travel time to get there, being able to present options, being able to present a framework of what that time would be, people can make an informed decision, and we can start to change the narrative within the community, because I think this narrative can be counterproductive to the work that we're trying to do, only because it clouds how we view our data. And I would just caution, I think this is excellent work and a good discussion, of course, but we just need to be mindful, we all break a certain lens to it.
Counselor Lewis?
Last question, I promise, Scott. Can you go to the screenshot that shows the study area?
Yes. I'm going to go back to... Oh, sorry. There you go. That's Lewis.
Okay. So it goes on the west side, north to Riverbend.
Correct.
Okay, just want to be sure, because there may be a misunderstanding, that within that area is where the proposed Salem River crossing would be, but the Salem River crossing, or any additional Willamette River crossing, was not, not subject of this task force.
Correct.
Thanks.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to go back to the issues that were raised by you and Counselor Kizer and Counselor Cook, which I think are good issues, because you can look at it, to me, at one end, well, what we need to do is we need to overbuild, so all the time, everybody's only going to take four minutes to go from A to E. That's one end of the spectrum. The other end is, we just don't do anything, and it stacks up, and it stacks up. And it seems to me that, on some level, this is part of the societal trade-offs for living in a town or a city of the size of Salem or bigger. You can't go from one end of Fossil to another, just, one end of Salem to the other, like you can go from one end of Fossil to the other, because you just have cars and cars and cars. And it's part of, to me, of the actual kind of trade-offs you make for living in a city, you're going to have some of these type of problems. You know, and following up on Counselor Cook, I suspect, on your experiential stuff, I suspect that if somebody is late to a meeting by five minutes, they don't say, they say, "I was late because of traffic," as opposed to saying, "I was late because I didn't leave five minutes earlier." You know, I mean, that's kind of where we look at things. So I would be interested in some sort of follow-up. What is the standard, do you use for these sort of things in a city? You have to expect delays, and what delays are kind of built up in other types of cities?
Okay, I would now like to call for public comment, unless any of you have, I feel like maybe we've covered, we okay? Okay, I have only three people signed up. Bob Cortwright?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Counselors. My name is Bob Courtwright, I live in West Salem. In way of background, I was a member of the Salem River Crossing Task Force, started about a decade ago. I spent my career working for the Department of Land Conservation and Development, and I was the lead transportation planner there for 25 years. I followed this bridge discussion closely, and I attended all but one of the congestion task force meetings. I think you've got a basically good set of recommendations to go forward, that you should certainly move forward with. Three quick points that I wanted to make. First is that you should turn these proposals into projects. A lot of the proposals that you have are not new, they're ones that are in the adopted transportation system plan. So there are things that you've already, or in some previous council, has already endorsed. Your tech, your staff is asking you for direction, I think the important direction that you should give is for them to make these things, to proceed with these things. A couple of reasons for that. One is, they're very cost-effective. Certainly, they don't do a lot, but they don't cost a lot for, given the amount of congestion reduction that you can get. And I wanted to point to a specific funding source that you could pursue. ODOT has transportation innovation, option innovation grants. Their next window for applying for those, and they're for up to $50,000, is in January, with the awards being made in March. So if you want to talk about ways to improve transportation options in this area, ODOT has resources. They also have lots of technical expertise that I think, that you could borrow on them, if you could bring them into the process. The second thing I wanted to suggest is that you should take the congestion estimates and forecasts that have come out of this study with a large dose of salt. And the reason is that the assumption in that analysis is that traffic is going to grow in lockstep with population growth, that at 1% a year, congestion is going to increase with population. That's just not the way congestion works. It's not the way people respond to congestion. As things get more congested, people put trips off or avoid making trips, we all know this in peak hour, if you live in West Salem. And when new capacity is added, people respond by making more trips. So we have to recognize that, that's not something that's cooked into the analysis. And the third and final thing I wanted to mention was, our long-term priority, or our major priority for addressing the long-term should be making the Marion and Center Street Bridges earthquake-resistant. I think you've got some bad information, as I understand it, the state bridge engineer, Bruce Johnson, says the Marion Street Bridge can be retrofitted, they haven't made a decision that it cannot, and that is worthy of consideration. And in the long term, that should be our primary priority, is to make those bridges as resistant to earthquakes as we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
One, one question, and I appreciate your comments about the things that we've already set up, that are already in the transportation plan. And, and one of them specifically I'll mention is Marine Drive.
Yes.
Marine Drive is in the transportation plan, and it goes from Glen Creek to Riverbend.
Right.
So you are in favor of that, Marine Drive?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd mentioned another previous one, ten, for 10 years, the city council supported the third bridge, and I know you're not in favor of that.
Well
Yeah, you see what I mean, Bob, though?
I assume that's a rhetorical question.
I mean, I think it was interesting that you tried to give us a rundown history lane, but, but let's not get lost. Okay? Counselor Anderson.
I'm interested in your point, too, about, sort of, you build it, the day will come in terms of increased growth. I think that is what's known as the law of induced demand.
Induced demand, or induced travel, is a big part of that, or induced growth.
What does that, what does that law say?
Well, it's basically that people respond to the opportunities that are available. Again, those of us who live in West Salem know to arrange our schedules to avoid going across the bridge, if we possibly can, during those peak hours when it's congested. And that's what people do. As soon as you relieve that congestion by adding new capacity, people say, it's easy to drive, so they don't put off making those trips.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Evans.
Good evening, Counsel. I want to thank you for actually taking a look at whatever solutions you can find to help with this situation. By the way, Mike Evans Ward 8. The, I think what we just heard was an interesting thing. So we heard that if we constrain people and keep them from being able to get where they want to go, they will have to adjust, and it is unfortunately true, and it does have an economic impact, but it also has a quality-of-life impact. And ultimately, we may find that it has an actual life impact. I myself ended up in the hospital a couple weeks ago with a really serious condition, and I'm really thankful that that was not on the morning that the hay truck turned over, because I may not have made it there. Because there's some things that can't wait. Getting to the hospital, when you're on the West Salem side of the bridge, so as you heard from the experts, there is no real alternative. You got one way across that bridge, and when that way stops, if you happen to be the person having a stroke or a heart attack, good luck. That's something that I think this council, as you're thinking about the needs of our community, you really need to think about. There's only one way across. Now, maybe they'll be able to retrofit, you know, our bridges to stand up in a Cascadia earthquake, and maybe not. We need another way to get from here to there, and our region needs it. But there's other things to consider, like what is the impact on the environment? We talked about all of these growing delays and growing delays. Well, what does that mean? What that actually means, for those that care about the environment, is that you have lots and lots of idling cars. What does that do? Well, that creates unneeded pollution every single day. So you have to think about, what are the real impacts? So my encouragement for all of you is to stop just thinking about, you know, okay, these little tiny solutions that aren't going to get us there, and think about the one that we've been working on for the last almost 14 years. And why don't we get that thing going? We need the Salem River Crossing.
I, I do want to understand, Mike, though, you do support us doing the short-term. I understand your commitment.
Oh, sh, well, you know what?
But do you have any problem with moving
Yeah, well, Salem Bridge Solutions Group, we, we really support anything that helps get things moving. Now, I will look at this list and tell you that I don't think, maybe a trolley, I don't know if you guys are, understand that, you know, we have a trolley
Slow down.
That went, that went out, that went out of business in Salem a little over 100 years ago. So Back to the Future may not be the real solution here, but, I mean, I think there's some good ideas, and so the ones that would work, I think, are worth trying.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks. Craig Evans.
Well, good evening, and thank you for taking your time on this this evening. I'm Craig Evans, also with Salem Bridge Solutions. My office is Crown Real Estate Group at 110 Wallace Road, so I get to sit and watch that traffic every single afternoon, and, and I guess, you know, I would just encourage you to think about, I've heard a lot of commentary on this, and obviously, we're passionate about it, we want to see a new bridge for our community, not because we want it named after the Evans Brothers, although that'd be fine, but we want it, we want a community that functions well. That's the truth. You know, I look at this, and I see, you know, we, we, we grew up in this community, and we used to do better than this. And, and now we're talking about things that, where we say to people, "Well, it's only going to be five more minutes of your time." Well, how many people, as a, as a quality-of-life issue, decide, I, I'm a real estate broker, how many people come into West Salem, I can tell you, virtually every client that thinks about buying in West Salem says, "Well, I don't know, I don't want to deal with the bridge." And that happens over and over and over. It depresses our, our economy and our real estate values. But it also is not, this isn't healthy. We should allow people to make their choices. I don't have any objection to people riding bikes. I ride my bike a little bit. I like it for recreation, but I can't do it for my work, and neither can the vast majority of the people that I know. And these are good people. These are people who are trying to live productive, active lives and benefit our communities. These aren't people that I look down on and say, "Well, they, they ought to be punished for that, that choice to drive their single-occupant vehicle, that's really bad for our planet." Well, gee, I don't think of it that way, exactly. I look at it, and I think, those are, those are my neighbors, and those are people trying to do good things, and we owe it to them to provide basic things as a community. We have a water system, and a sewer system, and traffic that we maintain, our Public Works Department does a great job, but we've got to give them the resources, we need infrastructure. It's a simple thing. We've outgrown our infrastructure. Why in the world, if we had outgrown our sewer system, the way we've outgrown our transportation system, and there was only 1% over our capacity being, going to that sewage treatment plant every day, what would we do? It would be a federal emergency. We'd be building more capacity right now, right? Because you have to, because you can't just flow raw, untreated sewage into the river. Well, we're over our capacity in our transportation system. What does a responsible community do? We build the capacity that we need. We've outgrown it. Let's just do the simple thing, the right thing, let's build another bridge, but let's also improve the other things that can be improved. I have, I, I support whatever we can come up with to help minimize the, the issues here, but we're behind the curve already, we got to get moving on this stuff.
Thanks very much, Craig. Any questions? Brian Bowles.
Good evening. It's good to be back here again. I'm usually just here for one thing, and that's just to advocate for another crossing over the river. And I want to share my time with the counselors, particularly the ones who don't support another automobile bridge over the river. And I want to know, again, environmental issues aside, because I think we've come to the conclusion that that impact is very minimal, and just money aside, because if, let's be honest, if you guys actually wanted a bridge, we could find the money for it, and there's already money that's been offered in the past at different times. So just money and environmental issues aside, and I'll even go further, let's say we do a downsized version of the big proposal that we have, okay? Maybe just like a Marine Drive with a smaller bridge going across to like Pine Street. Why are you not in favor of that, or would you be in favor of a downsized, kind of more like a compromised version of that?
Usually, we don't get questions.
I'm curious, I mean
I think it's rhetorical.
It's not that hard of a question, and
It's a good, it's a good question, I think everyone will be thinking of, about how the
Well, I would like an answer, like, I mean, maybe Anderson here's, oh, it's too stupid, let's be honest.
No, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Out of order.
You, one of the biggest hypocrites I've ever met, right here
Brian.
With his hands at immigration rallies.
Out of order.
Okay, I, forgive me, I'm sorry.
Brian, Brian, okay.
But listen, you can't hold hands at immigration rallies and say, "Come on, come on in," and then turn your back and come here, and then don't support any infrastructure growth. You don't want people to build new homes or own homes in the future, just, you're happy with them living in rentals and apartments the rest of their life, their, them, their kids, their grandkids.
Brian.
And that's just not fair, and I don't understand.
Your time's up, man. Your time's up.
I'm sorry, but this, I
I understand your passion, I know Counselor Anderson does too.
I'm willing to compromise, and I would assume that most
Brian, time's up.
Thank you.
Okay, sit down. Brent Culver.
Good evening. Can I ask a question first?
No.
I wouldn't.
No, you're not, you're here to, you're here to make a statement.
Okay, okay.
That's it. I don't want to go through this with every guy that wants to get up.
Understand.
Okay, thanks.
I apologize.
That's okay.
I just wanted a clarification on the long-range situation, that, that was it.
10 years.
Got that, I understand that part.
Okay, go ahead then. Go ahead with your statement.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Start timing him now, okay?
Wow.
Three minutes.
Yeah, I've been a resident of Salem for 56 years, 54 of them in West Salem. In 2008, I was involved in a traffic accident on the, on, on the Center Street Bridge. My daughter was in the car on the way back from water polo practice. My car was totaled, it took over two hours for the police and service to get to aid us because of the traffic. During, during that time, was able to get her over onto the sidewalk. One of the fears is that this, this fifth lane that you're proposing, or another lane, if I could ask the question, I might be able to get some clarification on that, but it's my understanding that that, that sidewalk would not even be there for use.
That, I think you're right.
Oh, I can, oh, okay, thank you, I appreciate that. So, the other one, on the
You're welcome.
The hay truck that went over the other day, my 83-year-old mother, who was a resident at Gibson Creek, had fallen that day. She's also been a resident of West Salem for all these years, tax-paying resident. Well, do you think she could have got across? Luckily, she did not. The EMTs were on this, on the other side of the river, able to help her out, but had she needed help, I don't believe that she would have been able to get that that day. So, you know, I could talk about, you know, the, the real time that it takes me to get to my State Farm office over by St. Paul, St. Paul's Episcopal Church, you know, if I drove there in a regular time, it's seven minutes, otherwise, regular traffic time, it's actually 19 minutes. I now drive all the way and avoid Wallace Road and go out on the highway to Doakes Ferry Road to get home. I live off of Orchard Heights Road, just past the park. The traffic now is up past the park. The traffic I can see at my office at 1550 Liberty Street, I can see it back up on, on regular, past Meyer Street in Salem. I mean, if you want to go downtown and have a nice meal downtown on a Friday night, you cannot get there. I now dine out in Monmouth, Dayton, and Amity. My nephew comes down to visit me on Tuesdays from Portland, because I'm a mentor to him. He complains of the traffic on Commercial Street. Portland, think about it. You want to be Portland, build it now.
Thank you. Ron. Good.
Good evening, Ron McNinch, Ward 8. First of all, thank you all for your service and your time, and this is the most important job. I'll see what I can get in in my three minutes here, I know it's lots to say, but just first, because of the incidents, and there is no alternative route because of the emergencies, and I care about the pollution, a whole bunch of all those idling cars, please promote a bridge that's going to work. If you don't favor the preferred alternative, third bridge as it is, find something else and promote another bridge. If you don't, it's to your discredit. If you do, amen, thank you very much. Yeah, if there's no incidents, we're at capacity. Practical driving tells me those times are too short. You know, coming back from Mission Street, trying to get through over the river, let's see, how to say this, five cars at a time, stop-and-go traffic is not 10 miles an hour, like on the chart, it just isn't. Coming down through West Salem, I used to drive to Silverton for 26 years to teach over there. Those times aren't realistic, I think, for our delays that we have, but again, that's just pollution and irritation, but there are incidents, we need another bridge, so there's another route. There's building going on at 344 Apartments in the last of Lindbeck's Orchard, at Riverbend and Wallace, the backside of Chandler Estates, I don't know how many, maybe 100, 150 houses going in. At Yola and Doakes Ferry, there's a bunch more houses, I know Dallas and Independence are building. I'm thinking 1% growth a year is, is way too low. There's a lot more people going to be coming in. You know, I could tell stories of other folks and things, but just, please, we don't need to accept trade-offs and big delays, just get another bridge going. And, you know, reinforcing these bridges, that's a good idea, if it's possible. Some of these other things, great, but a lot of them are pointless if you don't have another bridge to take care of the emergency issues. So please, go for it, get that stuff done. We don't want to have a lack of alternatives. We need another bridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you, Ron. I just wanted to, sorry, come back up.
Sorry, Ron.
I just wanted to ask you a quick question. You had said, I just wanted to get clarification, I guess, so you're in support of another crossing, not necessarily what's being proposed, but just another crossing? but just another crossing of some kind.
There are other possibilities. I know that you've been given other possibilities. I know bridge engineers and other people have sent you all other possibilities and their other designs. If you're not, you know, exactly going to like the way it wipes out the Edgewater District or whatever, at least get something going.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead. You, you, go ahead.
My name is Jan Morgen. I live in West Salem. And I really want to thank the commissioners for spending some time discussing the incremental, easier-to-do-soon kinds of things, because just, any of those things coming on sooner, it just seems, it just helps people get through those wait times. And it feels like something's happening while that longer journey with the elusive, long-term fix happens. And one thing that was mentioned in the presentation, really kind of little light bulb with me or hit the spot, and that was the item about the free right turn off the north ramp. And yet I noticed when the conversation turned that it wasn't even on the slide that was discussed. And I'm not sure, it seems like it wouldn't be expensive, but I know, like it was explained with changing streetlights and everything, I'm sure some expenses are involved. But it seems like one of the doable things that should be considered for the near term if possible. And, and also, one thing I've not known how much effort has gone into it, but I would encourage maybe some renewed effort, talking with the state, try to get them to some table about allowing, you know, at least entering into experiments with allowing broader flexible hours. And I've, I'm just coming off working for the federal government for 14 years. And, I mean, Congress even saw a fit to write a telework law, which I, that was 10 years ago, or about date, 2010, so not quite 10 years ago. But anyway, there's really quite a wide range of what can be done to reduce commute time in terms of, I mean, commute timing, if you get flexible hours going. And so, I was actually part of negotiating for my agency, because every agency got to figure out their own, what worked best for them and their mission and so on. And so I have a lot of ideas on that, if anyone would like to talk about that more. But my last thing was that I live nearby in, in West Salem. It's, I think, Point B on your map. And I do regularly travel, if not A to E, B to E, in four minutes. My, my flexibility, I mean, my schedule is more flexible in the last several years than maybe a lot of people face here. But I would say regularly from 9:00, 9:30 to 3:00, no problem. So in addition to the 12 hours overnight, you know, I mean, they're, they're real, I consider Salem an easy, you know, relatively easy to get around, even with this quagmire we have at certain hours. But anyway, at least one person can do it in four minutes.
Thanks, Jan. Good to see you after all these years. How've you been? Good. Who, who was over here? Suzanne, you on that?
Yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Suzanne Coltwuster, and I live in Ward Eight. But some of you know that for 30 years, I lived in East Salem, and I still represent the East Salem Neighborhood Association. Back in the early 1990s, Lancaster Drive was considered to be at gridlock. And people said, you don't want to get caught on Lancaster Drive, because it's going to take you forever to go from one end to the other end. So what we did was we got with the City of Salem, ODOT, and neighborhood associations, and we did a study, not unlike what you just finished, or began here, I'd say. And what we learned was that there was a lot of ways that we could make Lancaster Drive more efficient without changing the capacity by adding lanes. Peter can give you the details of all that. But what it, what it came down to was a series of small incremental changes that needed to be done to make the existing capacity of that street smoother, quicker, and easier. And it, it has taken a long time to get to all of those changes. But today, Lancaster Drive carries about twice the number of cars that it did in 1990. And the area has grown by thousands and thousands of homes and people that live in the East Salem area. Lancaster alone has gone from 50% developed to 100% developed. And yet, that street functions, and people no longer call it gridlock. So I think you're on the right road by doing these things. That's not to say that down the road, in another 15 or 20 years, there doesn't need to be another crossing. But I just want to compliment you for taking this attitude, that there are small things that we can do, that we can make it better. And you will see improvements. And if you get ODOT working with the City of Salem, and you build this into your long-term development plans, you too can make it move smoother. And, and so, like I said, I think that people get in a certain mindset that there's only one answer. But I think in reality, we've already proven in a number of things in City of Salem, Lancaster being one example, that it's really a series of small things that you do incrementally that do make it improve. So don't lose your focus on continuing to work with staff and ODOT on those, those things that are going to make Wallace Road and West Salem function better. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Suzanne. Yeah, Jim.
Suzanne, one question, because I think, and hopefully, as you know, in West Salem, Wallace Road is the option. Where Lancaster, my hunch tells me that part of the reason Lancaster is better off today is because streets like Hawthorne have been developed to the point where they take some of that traffic off.
Well, Hawthorne was there 20 years ago.
In the West Salem case, even with Marine Drive, built out to its largest capacity, there would be two options, just two.
So, so one of the problems with, I do live out off of Glen Creek, by the high school. And one of the things that isn't in your list, because I don't think it was in your study area, but could be looked at, was as future development happens, you could look at other ways that people could cut across West Salem more efficiently. But right now, there are streets with some improvements, could make the flow, Parkway to Cascade. Cascade terribly needs improvements on that street. And then you can get to the Rosemont exit. Helping those kinds of alternative routes, it's not going to be easy. But I think that they could be done in that area. I, I appreciate the fact of just knowing that there's a problem on the bridge. Right now, you can't tell unless you're in a certain system, because if, the other day, when the, the on-ramp on Wallace was blocked, Rosemont was open, but people didn't know that. And so they got stuck, you know, where they didn't have to be stuck. And, and also, maybe it's time for Salem to consider a helicopter transport for emergencies from West Salem to the hospital. Or maybe it's time for you to talk to Salem Hospital about beefing up their services, so there's an emergency clinic in West Salem where people that need to be triaged right away. There's, like I'm saying, there's all kinds of solutions that really need to be explored, long-range. And just don't get focused on this is the only solution. It's really a lot of little things that you could do.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you.
Mark.
Thank you. Mark Wig. I live in South Salem. And I just wanted to affirm that you're right, Chuck, Mayor, in saying that the only way to actually reduce congestion is to get people to change their habits. And there are things the city can do to help them. They can become better drivers and more knowledgeable drivers. But also, there are so many apps out there that will tell you, it's congested. If I don't have to go, I won't go. And the assumption is, I want to go to someplace at peak hour, and I don't want it to be congested. You can't make that assumption, people. You can't do that. So I think you're right. Let's help people. And if you ask them, and let them know, we don't have the money for the big fixes. So we need your help, the public's help, on making this work and reducing congestion. The one thing I'd also like to emphasize is, there's a difference between short-term fixes, actions, and long-term. And if you don't have the money, it isn't short-term. You don't have the money to build Marine Drive. That's not short-term. You have the money to buy the right-of-way and pave a multi-use path on Marine Drive. That's short-term. And you can do that. You have, it's in the plan. You have the money. You have the authority. Just do it.
Thanks, Mark.
Hi, Mark. Thanks for coming down. And I'm, I'm going to take the opportunity to ask the question. You've talked about the all-purpose path from Salem Town to downtown for a number of years. I'm curious, have you ever thought about getting a petition together and getting folks in West Salem to sign that, so we could have some real evidence that what's in fact you're saying is potentially true?
I'm working on that now.
Okay.
I'm working with, I may have something going on with the, well, I'm at university to get a video and get out there to the public and get, I'm working with people at Capital Manor on some things. And so, that's coming. One thing I think, that I noticed.
Is this answering his question?
Okay, yes.
Okay. Now, time's up. Time's up.
One more thing I noticed is that.
Mark, time's up.
It is?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joyce.
Thank you. My name is Joyce Judy, and I live in Ward Two. And thank you, councilors and Mr. Mayor. I was listening to this tonight, and I thought about the gentleman talking about traffic weaving. And I'm assuming he's talking about on the bridge itself, where they're trying to get into a more advantaged lane to go where they want to go. On Interstate Five, as you're exiting to 217, I think it is, to go off to the beach, they were having a real problem there. It's two lanes to get across that bridge, that overpass. And there were a lot of accidents. And what they did was, is they simply white lined the lanes and said, you can't cross that lane. It's illegal to cross the lane. So why can't you make it illegal for people to weave by having a white line, or even having small barriers that you can remove and replace during peak hours, which might help reduce your weaving capacity? So that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Joyce.
I would like to.
No, 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 please, please don't. No. Apologize privately, and we'll go ahead, okay? Anyone else? Okay, we're gonna, Counselor, why don't you go ahead and make the motion to move this for, oh, sorry.
Just ask one more question.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it came up, and I, I neglected to actually ask it in regards to the, the short-term recommendations that were brought forward, and whether or not there was an analysis of cost and/or actual congestion relief, because I think that's important if we're looking at moving that forward. If it's going to cost $10 million, and I get zero minutes of congestion relief, that's probably not a good thing.
Go, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, we do, we didn't provide any detailed costs for some of those, because some of those are policy. But, but some we could provide if there's.
That's, that's, Counselor, that's part of why we're going to move this, I think, to our, our policy goals process, in order to move them toward the city manager, to get them into the budget, the CIP, and all the rest of it. So, and TSB, all the rest of them.
All the acronyms we can think of.
Go for it, yeah.
Here's my motion. I move that staff be directed to move forward on the 16 recommendations in the November 5th, 2018 staff reports, including integration with existing city policies and plans, and in conjunction with appropriate governmental partners, with goal of implementation of the recommendations.
Let's clarify that. Why don't we do it, let's try my way?
Okay, sure.
You're going to send it to the Goals Policy Session of the Council to get this integrated. Let the Council kind of determine, this is a policy, this is a goal we want to move forward on, in conjunction with the manager. Is that a fit?
That would work.
Okay. Would that be okay?
Well, sure, but that, that doesn't, my concern is, the goal is to implement the policies. I don't mind the motion, the, the way you phrased it. But it's time for us to say we're going to do it or not. And the, the Council made your recommendation.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I have no question we're going to do a bunch of this. I want to just make sure we plug it in, in the right places, to get them done, instead of sit around looking at another plan.
Yeah.
And I think the goals and policy and budget process, Counselor, is the way this has been done. And I'm telling you, that's probably the better way to make this happen than to just throw it to the wind. I, I'm just asking you to kind of get it, get it focused through a policy we all set up. Okay?
Yeah, I agree with that. But in my view, this motion isn't throwing it to the wind. I say, integration with existing city policies and plans, in conjunction with appropriate governmental partners, how's that throwing it to the wind?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to do it the way I asked you to, if you wouldn't mind, just so we can get it into this process, that the manager can work with.
I, I'm happy to have you make the motion then, because I don't understand what, how, what you're saying is different than what I propose. So.
Okay, I'll make the motion then. Okay, I move that we forward this, the short-term recommendations, including, including establishment of a standard, as outlined by Counselor Kizer, to the Goals and Policy Session of the City Council, to be integrated into our budget and other processes. Okay. This is the way the, this is, I think, the way the manager can best use this and get it into actual process, so we can get some of this into effect within the next budget cycle, instead of trying to integrate it through other committees. Okay? So I'd ask you to approve the motion. Yes, Counselor?
So, what this actually looks like on the ground, is this will be coming to us later this month, when we have our work session, is that correct?
Yeah.
Our annual.
And it'll give them some time to get a little money attached to it, get some ideas attached to it, and get it moving along. Okay? Counselor Lewis?
I'm gonna vote for the motion. I, I am strongly in agreement with, with the number of the folks that spoke here tonight, that anything that we can do, the only bad thing we can do is nothing. Anything that we can do to help out the situation, even if it's just those wait times, I can picture the person getting on the bridge and needing to be home to relieve their childcare provider, and they're stuck. And without that sign that tells them it's going to take seven minutes, 10 minutes, 12 minutes, they have no idea. And at least with that, with that information, it relieves the anxiety that we all feel right now. And so I'm, I'm in favor of those, those small fixes, but I am also adamant that this is not the solution. We looked at long-term solutions, and nobody went with them. Nobody. $100 million for 10 years, and we're back to where we are. We need to come up with a different long-term solution.
Okay. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I'm gonna vote for the motion too, because my goal and my lawyer-like wordsmithing was to make sure that we could move forward with this as soon as possible, as soon as we can. And I, I think that was the intent of the mayor's motion too, and so I'm happy to support it.
Yeah, I, I think you'll find, Counselor, that this will, this will pick up everything you said, but it'll put it through something the manager can work with.
I think so too.
Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be supporting the motion as well. Again, we need to do something. There's actually a few things in here that I'd asked about, even in the long-term one, as far as that free right-hand turn. And I was told that basically, it's going to do nothing, because they ram into commercial there, and it's already backed up. So how many cars do we get off the bridge? That being said, if you look at the numbers at 9,000 trips per hour, that are increasing that four minutes, that is 600 hours or 75 workdays lost every hour in that four minutes that are being delayed. And by adding one minute to that, you take that from 75 workdays to almost 94 workdays. So that's not chump change. So when we're looking at what's acceptable to us, we have to look at the fact that when I drive to work, I'm not getting paid for that. There's many vehicles out on our roadways where that's their business. And so it affects our other costs as well. And if they're losing significant amounts, because we're not the only city on their route either, that it increases the cost. either, that it increases the cost of lots of things. Again, and then, going back to the one as far as pipelines or sewer pipes, if we only had one water main coming into town, we have two, one's really small, that really wouldn't be a very smart way to operate our utility. So, we really need to be cognizant as we move down the road, but, you know, that's not the quest of this task force. And it was to look at kind of some of the old things that we had done as well, and at least do something right off, since as a community, we can't agree on a certain thing out there. We need to at least make improvements wherever we can, again, if it's cost-effective. So, hence that first question that I'd asked.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll also be supporting this motion. I think it does exactly what the intention of this task force was, was just, which is to make some real progress on congestion relief now. And I just, for the benefit of our colleagues who were not there, just because we weren't able to reach consensus on the bigger things, doesn't mean that this body shouldn't look at them. That's why they're in this report, for you to consider, for you to understand what they, what they might cost. And so, I think it is something that might benefit from further exploration. It just wasn't something that we were going to get to consensus on in our task force for that. But it doesn't mean that those aren't valid considerations.
Okay. Yeah, I really agree. We need to move this along. It is doing what we asked it to do. The great disappointment is the long-term solutions are not complete. I will certainly consider all these. I'll consider other long-term solutions. I wish we could get to the courtesy of looking at the Third Bridge. I think that's essential. I continue to be absolutely committed that until we address the Third Bridge, we will not deal with the long-term congestion problems here, and not deal with the economic reality of Marion and Polk Counties, and the relationship to having to have a river crossing to have an economic future. I would hate to live, it's terrible to live in West Salem and have your eighty-three-year-old mother fall or have a problem. And that is, that I find really hurtful, that that's happening. But it also is terrible to live in Dallas and know you can't move your product, because you've got a choke point that shoots your truck through downtown Salem. And you can go on with all of the economic impacts of this. And I hope before this, this next few months is over, we'll have an opportunity to take one final look at that Third Bridge, so these guys that come down and talk to us get a chance one more time to try to help you all make sense of why this was a council policy and goal for almost fifteen years, and longer. Really, you can go back into the seventies and see the same thing. So, so, let's vote on this. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose. Motion passes. And we're adjourned.